All right, Senator, we are good to go.
Welcome. I am Senator Sharon Carson from Senate District 14. Today, we will be holding a meeting of the Senate Executive and Executive Departments and Administration Committee. Before we get started, I'll read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting that we are holding is in compliance with the right to know law. As the Chair of the Senate Committee on Executive Departments and Administration, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. In accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that, one, we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and selected legislative staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to the meeting on Zoom or YouTube and via phone by following the directions and links provided on the General Court website. Two, we have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting in the Senate calendar. Three, we are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email remotesenate@leg.state.nh.us or call Area Code 603-271-6931. Four, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. Five, please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Six, finally, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where they are and if anyone else is in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know. I will call the roll. Senator Reagan?
Senator Reagan, in my office, by myself.
Thank you. Senator Ricciardi? You're muted.
Good morning, Senator Ricciardi. I am alone in my home in Bedford.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Oh, Kevin Kavanaugh, at my home in Manchester. I am at home currently alone, but my family is around the house. Thank you.
Senator Prentice?
Senator Prentice, home in West Lebanon, New Hampshire. My husband is in the house, but not in the same room.
Thank you. Senator Carson? Senator Carson, I'm at home in Londonderry, and my daughter is here in the house, but I am in the room by myself. I'd also like to introduce our staff that's working with us this morning, Mr. Cameron Lapine and Ms. Ava Hawkes. So, we're going to go ahead and we're going to open the public hearing on Senate Bill 32 and call the prime sponsor, Senator Birdso.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Committee, for hearing Senate Bill 32. For the record, my name is Regina Birdso, State Senator for District 19, which encompasses the towns of Hampstead, Derry, and Windham. And I just want to, a little bit, in 2018, the legislator enacted a law authorizing the construction of the New Hampshire Fallen Troopers Memorial to be located adjacent to the State Police Headquarters on Hazen Drive in Concord. The memorial will honor those troopers who lost their lives in the line of duty since the inception of the New Hampshire State Police in 1937. And before briefly I discuss Senate Bill 32, I want to express my heartfelt thanks to the men and women who serve in our state police. We are extremely fortunate to have one of the best-trained, most professional state police in the country, I believe. And each day, these men and women put their lives on the line for us and the citizens of New Hampshire. It's not easy being in law enforcement all too often. It's a thankless job, but I truly believe we, in our state, are better off thanks to the commitment of these men and women. And I just want to say thank you to them. SB 2 is very simple. The funds to construct this memorial are all being raised privately. This bill streamlines the process and allows for the dispersment of some of those private funds to take place outside of the Executive Council. And we have Trooper Brian Strong is here today, and he will be speaking to this in greater detail. But I hope he can support this minor change so that the preliminary work can begin and which will add to the ability for the needed funds to be raised. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Birdso, for your testimony this morning. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Again, thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you.
Cameron, that's all I have to sign up to speak. Is there anyone else?
So, Senator, Madam Chair, I know that Senator Birdso mentioned that Brian Strong was here to speak. I don't have him signed up, but he is in the attendees list, so.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and let him in?
Brian, you should be all set.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Committee, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you on behalf of the Fallen Troopers Memorial Committee and the New Hampshire Troopers Association. What we're hoping to accomplish with this-
Mr. Strong, before you go on, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm sorry about that. My name is Brian Strong. I'm a lieutenant with the New Hampshire State Police, and I am also a member of the Fallen Troopers Memorial Committee.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
All right. Thank you. What we're hoping to accomplish, as previously stated, is a slight minor wording change on this bill to make it easier for this progress of this construction to move along. Currently, the way it's set up is we would need to go to, I guess, Governor and Council for every expenditure needed for this project. What we do, what we currently have is, we don't have a general contractor that we hired to build this entire memorial. What we have is several different contractors that have donated their time and materials for this. So we don't have one general contractor. Some of these contractors need a little bit of material to do their complete part. And then, so we're hoping, instead of having to go to GNC for every aspect of this, is to, with this slight wording change, maybe modify that. And if you look at the original bill under Section 6, Subparagraph E, I think it kind of outlines that, but I think this may be just some type of clarity we're looking to clarify with this changing of the Senate Bill 32.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your testimony this morning.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on this bill?
I do not see any at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing on Senate Bill 32. What do you folks want to do? Would you like to go into executive session?
I'm moving executive session.
Okay. Senator Reagan moves executive session. Senator Prentice seconds. We have to take a roll call vote. Senator Ricciardi?
Yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Senator Carson? Yes. Does anybody, would anybody like to make a motion on Senate Bill 32? Okay, Senator Reagan moves ought to pass, seconded by Senator Kavanaugh. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Senator Carson, can you just say the bill number for the record?
This is Senate Bill 32. Okay. Is there any discussion? This bill seems pretty straightforward. I don't really see any kind of problems with this. The final design will be approved by the Governor and Council. I just think they would like the ability to have to spend money on the memorial, which is being raised privately, and not have to go to the Governor and Council, which I think we all know meets once a month. And, you know, I think it can potentially just delay the building of the memorial. So I don't have a problem with this as well. So, is everyone ready for the vote? Okay, I'm going to call the roll. Senator Ricciardi?
Senator Ricciardi, yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And Senator Carson, yes. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Senator Reagan, seconded by Senator Kavanaugh. I will go ahead and call the roll for that motion. Senator Ricciardi?
Senator Ricciardi, yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And Senator Carson, yes. Is there anyone who would like to take this one out? Just for the, okay, Senator Kavanaugh will write the little Okay. We have one other one that we can do because we have another five minutes. And it is, let me take this. I believe it's Senate Bill 15, which is the bill that ratifies certain amendments to the State Building Code and the State Fire Code.
I would move ought to pass.
Okay, Senator Kavanaugh moves ought to pass. Senator Reagan, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay, so Senator Reagan will second that. Okay, is there any discussion on the ought to pass motion? Okay, I would just like to say that we could have done this last week, but I think I wanted to give folks an opportunity to review this because we did get testimony that someone believed the fire marshal would have liked an amendment to this bill to adopt amendments to the 2018 code, but we haven't adopted the 2018 code, so we can't adopt the amendments. But I would, I wanted everyone to have an opportunity to just, maybe if you wanted to talk to somebody about it and get some clarification, you have the opportunity to do so. Okay, so we have an ought to pass motion on Senate Bill 15. I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. Senator Ricciardi?
Senator Ricciardi, yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And Senator Carson, yes. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Senator Reagan moves the consent. Senator Prentice seconds. Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none. I will call the roll. Senator Ricciardi?
Ricciardi, yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Senator Carson? Yes. Okay, and I will work with Mr. Lapine to do the little blurb. That's all we have. We're holding one other bill until February 15th. And I'm going to put the committee in recess for five minutes until 9:20.
We have to vote to come out of executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, is there a motion to come out of executive session? Senator Prentice moves-
Second.
Seconded by Senator Kavanaugh. I will call the roll. Senator Ricciardi?
Ricciardi, yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Carson? Yes. The committee will be in recess until 9:20.
Senator Carson, you're muted.
Okay. Okay, seeing that it is 9:20, the committee will come out of recess. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on Senate Bill 33 and identify the prime sponsor, Senator Waters.
Senator Waters, you should be all set.
There we go. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Committee. It is good to see you.
Good to see you.
Senator David Waters, I'm here to introduce Senate Bill 33, an act relative to Native American name restoration. The bill establishes a process whereby cities and towns, with the assistance of the Commission on Native American Affairs, could name or rename locations or geographic features in the Abnaki language. Before going into the details of the bill, I would like to describe for a few minutes why such a bill is necessary in New Hampshire. In my work as a co-sponsor of the bill that established the Native American Commission, and also in my service as the Native American Graves Protection and Repatriation Act for the University of New Hampshire for many years, I saw that there are many procedures that were necessary in a state that had no federally recognized Native American tribal government, nor any state-recognized Native American tribal government. And New Hampshire does not extend state recognition to any tribal group. It's one of the reasons that the Native American Commission was established, as it has in its implementing language recognizing the strong and long historical presence and connections of Abnaki peoples to the state of New Hampshire, that it was necessary to have a commission that could perform various services. The interest in Native American names and naming is growing across the country. Interior, incoming Interior Secretary Deb Haaland for the Biden Administration, would be the first Native American person in that position, has expressed a strong interest, particularly when it comes to public lands, in naming. The Tribal Governments Association in the United States has published a list of 20 principles related to public lands in Indian Country newspaper recently. And we can see that we can expect some activities in this area. And so the timing seems really to be right to formalize a process where New Hampshire can anticipate in this. I mean, I think, as we all know, land holds a kind of memory that is often expressed through names. And for New Hampshire, it's an opportunity to recognize this, to enrich our understanding of place, history, and also the environment by understanding the presence of Native American names. How the bill would work, if you'll turn to the bill, is that it adds to the duties of the Native American Affairs Commission, the valuing and visibility and supporting a state initiative to restore and assign Native American names to places and geographic features. And it empowers the Native American Affairs Commission to assist municipalities in the state when requested, when requested in determining historic or otherwise appropriate Abnaki language names for locations and geographic features. And it shall also consult with the Division of Historical Resources and the Council on Resources and Development, established in RSA 162C, which has the capacity in the state of New Hampshire's and in terms of nationally determining geographic names as necessary. It is also important to note that the state retains naming authority over rivers and mountains in RSA 443. And so if a town or municipality wants to move forward on this, working with local groups or otherwise, then it would consult, the municipality would consult with the Native American Affairs Commission on the selection of appropriate names. The process, I wanted to explain just briefly, you know, a municipality, of course, as we know, can name a street or do whatever it wants in certain ways. But for a name to appear as the official, officially-recognized name, there'll be then on maps and other documents. It has to go through a process, through the Council of Geographic Names Authority and the U.S. Board of Geographic Names. This body, at the federal level, is entrusted with placing names on new features, removing derogatory names, or in some cases renaming existing, changing the names of existing features. Now, each state has a representative. For New Hampshire, it's Ken Gallagher in OSI. And the usual process, when there is a federally-recognized tribe, is that when a name is proposed to the council, it consults with the tribal government. Now, that's what we can't, we don't have, so that's not a process that we can use. I was on a call a couple of weeks ago with Raina Thiel. She's the head of tribal, she was the head of tribal government issues in the Obama Administration, and she is now the tribal advisor and liaison for the Biden Administration. And I asked her what a state should do if it does not have a federally or state-recognized tribe. And I described my bill, and she said, well, that seems to be the way then to go to ensure that you would have participation by native peoples if you don't have a federally or state-recognized, New Hampshire state-recognized tribe. And I spoke with Ken Gallagher yesterday. I think he is listening in. I'm not sure if he's going to testify. And he said that, you know, he thought the bill would be useful and would seem to be a workable proposal and could assist in the ways in which names are brought forward and lend some authority to this process. I want to note also, I've had conversations with Kathleen Blake, the Chair of the Native American Affairs Commission, and Denise Puleo and others. This is one of those bills that didn't emerge from drafting until two days before I had to sign off, so that didn't allow there to be a special meeting of the Native American Affairs Commission to review the bill completely. It does plan to have a meeting fairly soon. I think there may be some name clarification needed as to what the exact responsibilities of the commission will be and to ensure that those Native American people in the state who may not be represented directly on a commission at a given time because the rotating membership there would be consulted as well. I do believe that that meeting will occur fairly soon and that there may be a fairly simple amendment that would come forward after that meeting. So I would ask that the committee not exec on this for a couple of weeks, and I think we'll come forward and have something that will work. I think that, in conclusion, I think that there, that this, there's a lot of good prospects for this process. I think it'll be educational for municipalities, for students, and for others. I think it would be an important step in recognizing Native American history and presence in the state and also the potential restoration of those histories and knowledge about the land we call New Hampshire. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Senator Waters. Are there any questions from the committee? Senator Waters, I have a question. Is there a procedure that a town or a community has to follow? And the reason I ask is, are the people of these communities going to vote on whether or not to name changes? Is this to, to make those name changes, I should say? Are they going to, you know, is this going to be on a ballot in a municipality, and the majority of the town will vote on this? Or how is this going to work? Have you thought about a mechanism that way as well?
Sure. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And if you look at the bill- And if you look at the bill language, it talks about the governing body of a town and/or municipal or a government body of a city. So that language is the, you know, way of indicating that it would have to be a decision of the governing body. So that means a vote by the council or by town meeting, I would suppose. So that's, that's, that's the assumption in the bill by using that term, the governing body.
Because, Senator, the concern that I have is you could have a community at odds, and the governing body, being the town council, could say, yes, we're going to move forward with it. But you could also have the people saying, no, we want to vote on it. So I don't know if that's something you want to clarify, or if you just want to just leave it open and let people decide how they want to do this.
Well, Madam Chair, you know, I think there'd be two ways to go, to leave it as it is, or it could also say upon vote of the governing body. And I could add that here as well. So that would, if, that would clarify it. And, you know, I, again, I think that if this is, if this process is to go forward to the federal Names Board, surely something that doesn't come forward is an unanimous request that has gone through the state authority and then brought to the federal authority or brought to the federal authority and then, you know, the document that accompanies that. I just can't imagine that they would even want to look at something that doesn't have the authority of the town behind it. So I think that it may make a lot of sense to add upon vote of the governing body here.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I was just curious about that, because I think if you want to bring it forward, you want to bring it forward as strongly as you possibly can. And if you have a vote that was taken by the community that endorses this, this action, I think it just makes the request stronger. Okay, thank you, Senator Waters. Are there any further questions?
I have my hand raised.
Okay, Senator Reagan?
So why isn't the staff noting that?
I'm sorry?
Why doesn't the staff notice that?
We just reached the point where we would acknowledge your hand being raised, Senator.
Okay, Senator Waters, nice presentation, very complete. My only question is, does this impose any cost on the state?
Thank you for your question, Senator Reagan. I don't believe so, because it says here in the language that "as requested." So it does not place any research requirement necessarily on any, any body. I do think there is a question from the Native American Affairs Commission, and I believe you have a letter from Sheri Gould about this as well, who is in Historical Resources. And I think that's one of the areas of the language that we're going to clarify. This is seen as a voluntary, a voluntary process. Certainly, the groups that want to bring a name forward to a municipality, I assume are the ones who would do the research, they'd prepare a document of that research, and then they would request the Native American Affairs Commission to review it. And so the bill does not anticipate that there be, you know, staff time or this, you know, additional research that is required of the commission or by the state. And Ken Gallagher, it is part of his, you know, job described at this point to serve as New Hampshire's representative and on the naming council, so that's, that's what he does. And, and, you know, in this conversation with him, you know, there are cases in the, over the, you know, past few years, when this process is not related to Native American naming necessarily, has gone, has gone forward. And so that's just the normal, the usual function of our government now.
Do you have a follow-up, Senator Reagan?
No, no, I just, that would be a point of objection, and I just wanted to clear that for David's bill.
Thank you, Senator Reagan. As I said, you know, I believe that that will be clarified, and perhaps the governing body vote, and then perhaps consultation with native groups that are not representing the council on the, on the Native American Affairs Commission would be the substance of an amendment that I would bring forward.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Waters. We will honor your request to hold the bill until the council meets, and please inform us after the council meets and bring forward whatever amendments that you need.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, do we have any other folks who would like to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair. So before we go down the list, I did want to bring to your attention that Representative Horgan has his hand raised. I don't know how you would like to proceed.
Okay. How many people are on the list to speak?
Well, we have a few hands raised. So the next person who signed up to speak is Sheri Gould, who has her hand raised. Again, Representative Timothy Horgan has his hand raised, has had it raised for quite some time. And then there's another hand raised. The name of the attendee must be a username of some kind, so I can't truly decipher.
Okay. All right, why don't we go ahead and recognize Representative Horgan?
We all set, Representative?
Representative Horgan, good morning. Please identify yourself for the record.
I'm Representative Timothy Horgan from Bradford County, District 6, which is the towns of Durham and Madberry. And I'm not sure what the native names for either of my towns were, although our school is named after an Indian leader named Mo Hiramet. An actually kid, that location was a hill, this was Mohammed, so I thought it was named after like Mohammed, the prophet, but no, it was a Indian tribal leader named Mo Hiramet. So names are, I just want to say, names are very important. The river that I live near currently, Oyster River, I actually have no idea why it's called the Oyster River, except for fact that I find oysters in the estuary. I did, in a lot of summers in my childhood, an uncle who had a farm in Wentworth, the ham, from the Baker River, and I never gave the name much thought, but I heard it was named after Lieutenant Tomit Baker, who, like I said, did what now seems like a very questionable thing. In fact, you know, with history views of him now, he's a mass murderer. So like, is, the river is also a squam tumake, which means salmon spawning space. So that's one river that probably had been from a rename, even though that's pretty like a, if that's a bit of a mouth.
Representative Horgan, could you just let us know, do you support the bill?
Oh, of course, yes.
Okay, we just want to make sure, because I, I'm listening to your testimony, and I'm kind of trying to figure out.
Oh, yes, I just support it.
So.
I just support it. I'm, and I can't speak to the proposed amendment, because I have not seen it. It's maybe the subject of some controversy, but we'll see what, we'll see what it works out when the amendment finally arrives. And that's, 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 bill's in your possession now, so you can do what you want with it. So I think this is a very important bill. It, I mean, it is mostly enabling legislation, it just enables the towns and cities to do what they already can do, but it kind of clarifies things a lot and also creates more of a role for the Native American Commission. This year, we have no state-recognized tribe. I would probably favor recognizing the local Abenaki, Abenaki Nation as an official tribe if that opportunity ever comes up. There's been some resistance to in the past. I think we had a bill, we had a bill, the establishment commission, that was controversial, that almost died in the house, because some people were worried about casinos, which is, has nothing to do with anything, and I believe they have no interest, there's no interest in operating tribal casinos here in New Hampshire. And so, yeah, so I definitely fully support the bill as the bill is introduced. And so, so I think it's very, I just think it's a very important thing, and we should, you know, we should preserve the names, because even some names, we think are, you know, English names, actually have Native roots, like Sun Cook. I never thought about much why that village's name Sun Cook, but turns out that's a Abenaki name. And then also the Weers in Laconia, that's a, that's a direct translation of the Abenaki name, because there was a Weer there, there at the out left of Lake Winnipesaukee. Lake Winnipesaukee's name actually is, of course, that's an Abenaki, Abenaki name too. So that's, I just want to say, this is a very excellent bill, and it should pass, and we should, we can, we go to, we can go to the extreme of where my indigenous roots are in Ireland, and there in Ireland, every town has an English name and an Irish name, and we could identify the names of all the localities, I wouldn't be opposed to that, but I don't think that's going to be possible. That's where the cost to the state, the Senator Reagan was worried about, the state is, does preserve the names of all, that is the entity that preserves the names of, you know, everything in the state, you know, natural features and roads, and this doesn't add anything to that basic governmental activity. Just, we may have altered it name for a few, few, few things, or even change the name of, name of a few things, but, you know. But, and of course, as Senator Waters said, it's the governing body. So either the town meeting, if it's a town meeting, town, or the city council, or if your town like Durham, it would be the town council, something would be. So I'm sure no name changes would be made without the consensus of the, all the residents of the town. So I support the bill, so thank you.
I was just going to say, thank you for your testimony this morning, Representative. I was going to ask the committee, do they have any questions for Representative Horgan? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your testimony this morning, Representative.
Thanks.
Next, why don't we put through Sheri Gould?
So, sure, Senator, I did want to bring to your attention that Representative Sofakitis, my apologies if I'm mispronouncing that, has their hand raised.
Okay, why don't we put them through?
Representative, you should be all set.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning, good morning. This is my first time visiting the Senate in this kind of capacity. I would say that I am in favor of this bill and.
Representative, Representative, before you get started, we need you to identify yourself for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Representative Catherine Sofakitis. I'm from Ward 7 in Nashua.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed with your testimony.
I'm, I just would like to say that I would, I support this bill, and I would love to be part of the discussion on it. And I think that as children come to see the State House and as children grow up in New Hampshire, there's already so many Native names on the maps, and it would just be nice to give them one more tool in their toolbag to understand this culture that was here many, many years before the colonial, colonialists came over. And I would look forward to working with Senator Waters on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions for the representative from the committee? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't we talk to Ms. Gould?
Okay, Madam Chair, next we have Sheri Gould.
Okay, thank you. Ms., good morning, Ms. Gould.
Why, Senator Carson? I'm Deloitte Sally Gould. My name is Sheri Gould in Nynh, Mass. I live at, I live in Warner, but near Lake Mass. I just read you in our language and gave you the title of reverting to our.
Ms. Gould, we're having a little difficulty in hearing you. Can you speak a little louder, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I was saying, my name is Sheri Gould, and I live in Warner, New Hampshire. I am not going to read my testimony. I provided you a four-page, you all have that. I want to thank the committee. I want to thank Senator Waters and all of the sponsors for the bill. We're certainly excited about the opportunity to revert to our names. You know my concerns. Senator Waters has addressed that. I am urging the committee to retain the bill in committee today so that we have the time to do what Senator Waters has asked. As I outlined in my letter, we're working actively in our communities here in Warner, Bradford, Hopkinton, and Hennaker. And I want to make sure that this bill is optional in terms of consultation, that it doesn't force a sign-off that'll create a bottleneck. I agree with Senator Waters, there's an incredible amount of interest. As our tribe has started working in these four communities, we've gotten requests from all over the state to assist with understanding their, their Abenaki history. And I can envision, as Senator Waters said, that there will be a lot of these kind of requests coming forward. The commission meets four times a year, and in my letter, I outline the level of research that can be required. So we don't want a bottleneck, we don't want to hamstring the towns from being able to do what they want to do. So thank you, my testimony. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony, Ms. Gould. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Just so you know, Ms. Gould, we are going to hold on to the bill until we hear back from Senator Waters. So hopefully that will give you folks enough time to work through whatever issues that you have and come forward with some changes for us.
Leonie, Senator Carson, thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else, Ava? You have the one person who's on the phone.
Madam Chair, we have Kathleen Blake next.
Okay. Okay, why don't we go ahead and put her through?
You should be all set, Kathleen.
Good morning, Ms. Blake. I think you need to unmute yourself.
Good mornings, Madam Chair. Good morning, Senators. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am Kathleen Blake. I am the current Chair of the New Hampshire Commission on Native American Affairs. I do have a statement to read to you from my colleagues on the commission. It was a unanimous statement. I am reading it now. "We are pleased to have this bill brought forth. We appreciate that we have been included. We do have concerns about the language and feel that modifications need to be made. We would like to have enough time to consult constituents about this." That is the statement from the New Hampshire Commission on Native American Affairs. "I would like to personally state that I would be very interested in seeing proposed amendments. I have not seen any yet, nor has the commission. We will do what we need to do to process this, this bill so that it is suitable for all Indigenous peoples here in the state. We do need some time to do that, so I am pleased that it's being held in committee." That's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blake, and thank you for making the concerns of the commission known, they're duly noted. And as I said before, we are holding on to the bill to give folks time to work through the issues that need additional work. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your testimony this morning, Ms. Blake.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there is no one else signed up to speak, and at this time, there are no hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and, I'm sorry, did someone say something? Okay, I am going to close the public hearing on Senate Bill 33. Okay, moving along, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing on the last bill we have this morning, which is Senate Bill 42, and recognize the prime sponsor, Senator Reagan. Good morning, Senator. Senator, you're, you need to unmute.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I'm Senator John Reagan from Senate District 17, and I bring before you today Senate Bill 42, an act restricting public officers from engaging in certain private dealings. So this is a constituent request in a town that had suffered from an abusive situation of a select person moving to give themselves work at the town's expense. So most of the bill and the idea and all is, has been in, has been in force, and this just adds to purchase or buying or selling real estate or commodities or other personal property, and that all the bill does is add. property, and that all the bill does is adds or provides services. And the services would have to be in excess of $200 to require competitive bidding. So, and it has wide bipartisan support, as you can see from the list of sponsors.
Yes, yes, it does, Senator. Thank you for your testimony this morning. Are there any questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, thank you, Senator. Ava, is there anyone else?
All we have, Madam Chair, signed up to speak, and then we don't have any hands raised at this time.
Okay, seeing that there is no one else to testify, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing on Senate Bill 42. What is the?
Executive session.
Okay, Senator Reagan moves executive session, seconded by Senator Prentice. The bill, the only bill we have in front of us that we could exact would be Senate Bill 42, is there a motion on the bill? Senator, Senator Lapine.
You need to take a roll call to go into.
Oh, that's right. I'm, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting. Okay, so I'm going to take a roll call about moving into executive session. Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Rishardi?
Senator Rishardi, yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And Senator Carson, yes. Okay, as I was saying, the only bill we have in front of us is Senate Bill 42. Is there a motion on Senate Bill 42?
Move out to pass.
Okay, Senator Kavanaugh moves out to pass, seconded by Senator Prentice. Is there any discussion on Senate Bill 42, the ought to pass motion? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to call the roll. Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Rishardi?
Rishardi, yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Senator Carson, yes. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Senator, Senator Prentice, seconded by Senator Kavanaugh. I'll go ahead and call the roll on, on the motion of consent. Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Rishardi?
Rishardi, yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And Senator Carson, yes. Senator Reagan, since this is your bill, would you like to write the statement for us?
Sure.
Okay. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Senator Prentice, seconded by Senator Kavanaugh. Okay, I will call the roll. Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Rishardi?
Rishardi, yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Kavanaugh? And Senator Carson, yes. Okay, we are done our business for the day. I'd like to thank all of you for all your help this morning, and we're, I think we're doing good. We're, we're moving along, so that's good. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Senator Prentice, seconded by Senator Rishardi. So we will call the roll. Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Rishardi?
Rishardi, yes.
Senator Prentice?
Prentice, yes.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And Senator Carson, yes. Thank you all, and special thanks to Mr. Lapine and Ms. Hawks for your help this morning, and we will see you next week. Have, everybody have a great day. Bye-bye.